Okay, I want to call our October 4th meeting to order. Our invocation today and pledge of allegiance will be from Vice Chairman Wayne Acock. Our hands, please.
Dear Father, thank you for the day. Thank you for your many blessings. This gives us the wisdom and the knowledge to make the right decisions for the county of Wayne. And we ask that you be with our men and women in uniform and our men and women, our first responders, that sacrificed so much for us to have the safety that we have in Wayne County. We also ask that you be with the people that were affected by the storm last week, especially in the state of Florida, be with the ones that lost everything, and be with the families of the ones that lost family members. And we just ask that you continue to look after them. And we just ask that you be with the leaders of our state and the leaders of our nation to make the right decisions. Because sometimes we think that our world is going in the wrong direction, and we just ask for your guidance to get things back under control. We ask this in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of September the 20th.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Adjustments of the agenda?
Yes, sir. One adjustment under Special Presentations 1A, the addition of Resolution Number 2022-39. That's all the adjustments, sir.
We need to change the wording on "for" to "consent agenda," don't we?
The wording on the consent agenda, yes, sir. You're correct. It would be a motion to approve, change the word "award" to "approve," pre-qualified vendors, change vendors to contractors.
Okay. No other changes. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
I approve.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion signify by raising your right hand. All right, and that was the proclamation.
Special Presentations, item number one, a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2022-29, a resolution honoring the life of Sergeant Matthew Ryan Fishman. Turn this over to the sheriff.
Sheriff.
Good day to Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to be here this evening for this special presentation. As all of you are aware, August 1st of this year was a very tragic time for the Wayne County Sheriff's Office, as well as all of Wayne County and North Carolina. And we're here to honor tonight the people that were involved in that situation, that were injured and fatally wounded that evening. And at this time, I would like to call Ms. Sarah Fishman to the front to join me, please. And I'd like to say that some other Fishman family are here, the parents, as well as the children of Sergeant Fishman. Sarah, this is a presentation from our county resolution. Whereas Matthew Fishman was born in Grand Forks Air Force Base, North Dakota, as the middle son of Dave and Stacy Fishman. And whereas Matthew Fishman was a child of God, the brother of Michael and Joshua, and their wives Monica and Amanda, the devoted and treasured husband of Sarah, and the loving father of Nolan and Kara. And whereas Matthew Fishman was also a grandson, an uncle, and a friend to all who knew him. And whereas Matthew Fishman was a member of Love and Remo Baptist Church, serving on the security team and gained time with the Iowanas. And whereas Matthew Fishman dreamed of becoming a police officer as a young child, and had that dream fulfilled when he was sworn in as a man of policemen. And whereas Sergeant Matthew Fishman became a member of the Wayne County Sheriff's Office in 2010, having served on the dive team and as a K-9 handler. And whereas Sergeant Matthew Ryan Fishman was shot in the line of duty on Monday, August 1st, 2022, and passed away on Tuesday, August 2nd, 2022. And whereas Sergeant Matthew Fishman, in true servant's fashion, gave his life protecting others and gave life to others as his final gesture. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby resolve and recognize the end of watch for Sergeant Matthew Fishman and extends its deepest and serious condolences to his family and friends.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. Do we adopt Resolution 2022-29, a resolution honoring the life of Sergeant Matthew Ryan Fishman?
We have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, also, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2022-39, a resolution awarding service weapon to Sarah Fishman.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
And Sarah, in honor of Sergeant Matthew Fishman, for the heroic effort and sacrifice made, you will always be remembered, Sergeant Fishman, in the watch, August 2nd, 2022. This is his sidearm that he carried to protect the citizens of Wayne County.
Thank you.
[applause]
Um, thank you. I think each and every one here is very vital. For my family, my husband's family, my children, and to Torres and Cox and everyone in this I'm thankful for your dedication.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number two, Sheriff, you can take that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Ramon Torres and Logan Cox to please join me as well up here. Come right here to my left, please. This is a resolution being presented from our county. Whereas on Monday, August 1st, 2022, Deputy Corporal Andrew Logan Cox and Alexander Ramon Torres were on call with the Wayne County Sheriff's Office. And whereas Corporal Cox and Deputy Torres were on the premises when Sergeant Matthew Fishman arrived on the scene. And whereas an individual within the premises fired upon Sergeant Fishman as he exited his vehicle, gravely wounded Sergeant Fishman. And whereas Corporal Cox and Deputy Torres immediately ran to Sergeant Fishman to remove him from further harm's way. And whereas the individual within the premises fired upon Corporal Cox and Deputy Torres, injuring both of them. And whereas despite serious injuries, Corporal Andrew Logan Cox and Deputy Alexander Ramon Torres removed Sergeant Fishman from the line of fire, allowing his evacuation to a medical facility. And whereas, from the Book of Romans 13:4, "For he is God's servant to do you good." Corporal Cox and Deputy Torres represent all that is good, not just in law enforcement, but in our community and our world. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby resolve and recognize the unselfish and heroic actions of Corporal Andrew Logan Cox and Deputy Ramon Torres, and deeply appreciates the service to Wayne County and its citizens. Thank you.
Sheriff.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We adopt Resolution 2022-30, a resolution honoring the heroic actions of Deputy Alexander Ramon Torres.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-31, a resolution honoring the heroic actions of Corporal Andrew Logan Cox.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. And thank you. Okay, my next item?
Okay, item number four is a motion to approve the 2022 Fire Prevention Month proclamation.
Okay, and I believe Mr. Kearney is here to present this.
Thank you, Commissioners. My name is Bruce Kearney. I'm with Wayne County Firefighters Association. I'm the Fire Prevention Chairman. Got a big month coming up. It just started. I'm going to read the proclamation.
Okay.
I might need some glasses for that. But no, y'all can understand that. Mr. Foster won't be long. Okay, whereas Wayne County, the county of Wayne, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Wayne County. And whereas fires are a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires kill more than 2,580 people in the United States in 2021, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And the fire departments in the United States responded to over 356,500 home fires. And whereas smoke alarms sense smoke well before you can are alerting you to danger in the event of fire, in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas Wayne County residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of smoke alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas Wayne County residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Wayne County residents will make sure their smoke alarms and CO2 alarms meet the needs of their family members, including those with sensory and physical disabilities. And whereas Wayne County first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Wayne County residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2022 Fire Prevention Week thing, learn the sounds of fire safety, effectively serve to remind us it is important to learn the different sounds of smoke alarm and carbon monoxide alarms. Now therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Fire Prevention Month throughout this county, and urges all people of Wayne County to plan and practice home fire escape and Fire Prevention Month 2022, and support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Wayne County Fire Emergency Services. Thank you.
Thank you for reading that for us. Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion?
I just, real quickly, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank Bruce and his team for what they do for fire prevention, and thank all of the volunteer firefighters in Wayne County. Because as I have told him many times, the volunteer fire departments in Wayne County provides a service that the county cannot afford to pay. And again, Bruce, thank you.
Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion indicate, show your right hand. Thank you.
Okay, item number five is a motion to approve the 2022 Breast Cancer Awareness Proclamation.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for letting me read this proclamation. As many of y'all know, this is very dear and dear to me. I'll read the proclamation, then I'll make a couple more comments. 2022 Breast Cancer Awareness Proclamation. Whereas breast cancer touches every corner of the United States, and hundreds of thousands of Americans will be diagnosed with breast cancer, and tens of thousands will die from it. And whereas about 1 in 8 women born today in the United States will get breast cancer at some point in their lifetime, and approximately 2,700 men are diagnosed with breast cancer each year. And whereas, we show our support for every individual and every family struggling with breast cancer, and we pause to remember to those we have lost. And whereas Breast Cancer Awareness Month in October is a chance to raise awareness about the importance of early detection of breast cancer by getting a mammogram and encouraging our community, organizations, churches, families, individuals to get involved. And whereas, we salute the women and men who dedicate themselves to prevention, detection, and treatment as we observe Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, hereby proclaim October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Wayne County, and encourage all citizens to join in activities that will increase awareness of what we can do to prevent breast cancer, adopted this day, the fourth day of October 2022. That's informal motion, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Briefly, as many of y'all know, I am a breast cancer survivor. I was one of the 1% of men that has breast cancer each year. And I consider myself lucky, blessed, because breast cancer is a cancer that the doctors and the research and scientists, they've had a handle on it. I've been cancer-free for 10 years, and like I say, I'm one of that 1%. But I encourage all of the females, excuse me, to please stay on top of it, because 99% of breast cancer is in females. And it's a terrible disease, but it is one that can be treated now. There's thousands and thousands of women and men that are living today because of the effort and the hard work of the doctors and the scientists that have got a handle on this cancer. We're not just fortunate with some cancers, but we are with this one. And again, I just want to thank everyone for your support, and please get the word out, especially to our females. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I wore my pink shirt today because of breast cancer. It hit close to home. I lost my sister a few years ago. She was my big sister, but I like to say she was my big little sister. She was my biggest supporter, and you know, she's missed. She's missed. And just, you know, I want people to pay attention to, you know, being aware of breast cancer and taking care of your appointments. It's very important. My sister, she was very young, and I lost her. And just wish she was still here. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to approve, signify by raising your right hand. Okay.
Item number six is a motion to approve the 2022 Industry Appreciation Month proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. 2022 Industry Appreciation Month. Whereas the Wayne County Board of Commissioners supports the endeavors of industry in Wayne County, and whereas the Wayne County Development Alliance hosts an industry celebration each year to thank the more than 75 major manufacturers, distributors, wholesalers, machine shops, and other businesses in the county. And whereas, events planned to celebrate these industries include a golf tournament at Walnut Creek Country Club, Fortliff Rodeo at Wayne Community College, and awards ceremony to name Industry of the Year. And whereas, representatives from local businesses and industries, and guests, who will include officials from economic development allies, local and state elected officials, and community leaders, will attend these events. And whereas, October is recognized as Manufacturing Month. This is an annual tradition, giving the community a chance to pause and thank our local industries for all they do for Wayne County. Now therefore, be resolved that Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Industry Appreciation Month in Wayne County, adopted this day, the fourth day of October 2022.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. Well, we're just clipping right along here. We have two public hearings, but they are not scheduled until 5:30, so it's okay, we will go on to the consent agenda. So we discussed those items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda, item 1 through 3, with the change to item number 4, to motion to award contractors for the Wayne County Replacement Jail and approval of the bidding process.
Approve it.
Yes, approve, yes. Thank you.
All right, we have a motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. All right, we will go on to new business. And under new business, we have a presentation from Public Affairs Director Joel Gilli.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Question, board? We are back here talking about the sales tax referendum that you guys have approved to be on the ballot for this election. So just wanted to provide you guys a quick little update and provide some additional information for residents. Most of this background information we discussed before, but I did want to highlight it again for anybody who may have missed it the first time. So of course, the Board of Commissioners are able to place an additional quarter cent sales tax on the ballot, and that is what people will see on their ballot this year. The important thing to remember is that it does exclude gas, prescription medication, and non-prepared food and groceries. So those bills are not going to go up with this. The important thing that we like to tell people is that the sales tax affects everyone. So people who are visiting the county will also pay that additional sales tax, and so it does not just affect property owners like a property tax increase does. And this is just an alternative revenue source that the board is looking at to help services here in the county. How does it affect the individual? So I like pictures. I like things that break it down. A $4 purchase will cost an additional one penny. I like to think about it as how many times do you walk across and see a penny in the parking lot, and you don't really think about it? So a $4 purchase is one more penny. A $100 purchase would be an extra quarter, and a $400 purchase would be one extra dollar. Again, that does not affect your food, your groceries, your gas, things like that. Why it's important? So a lot of people go to other counties, and they like to go out to dinner and things like that. They're already paying that in a lot of the other counties. Wake, Orange, Sampson, Duplin, they are all at 7%. And so that's higher than what we're at now. This will generate approximately $2.8 million in revenue for the county, whereas a property tax increase, if you raised it one cent, would only generate $900,000. And so you think about the amount you would have to go up on property tax just to meet that $2.8 million. It will also allow you, as the board, to possibly lower property tax. And it allows the county to provide better services. And so that's something that, you know, we're always looking to do, always looking to grow and provide more services. These are just a few things of what this will fund. All of the county departments, the Health Department, DSS, the Department of Social Services, our EMS stations, our EMS providers, the Sheriff's Office, 911 Center, landfill and convenience centers, all the branches of the library, senior center, veteran services, and a lot of crucial school safety improvements that the school system has right now. This is the campaign moving Wayne forward, because we ultimately want to move Wayne forward. So you will start seeing this. A lot of our informational campaigns launched this week for residents so that they can be informed when they head to the polls. Here's a couple of the ways that we're doing that. You'll see that on local websites, on the radio. We want people to make sure that they're informed when they head to the polls. And just a quick little recap. Remember, it's one penny on a $4 purchase, it's a quarter on a $100 purchase, and a dollar on a $400 purchase. It allows you guys to possibly lower property taxes. It does not include gas, prescription medication, and non-prepared food and groceries, so that will not go up at all with this. This is what you'll see on the ballot in the election this year. The voters will ultimately decide how we move Wayne forward. And if you would like more information, we do have a webpage set up, wangov.com/saltax that provides all the information, frequently asked questions that people may have about it. Ultimately, our goal is just to make sure that people are informed and they can make the decision that they would like to make this year in the election. Okay. Any questions for me?
Questions for you? I do like to see how you've got that broken out, because it's, a lot of people got confused over the quarter. Quarter. They thought that we were raising taxes by a quarter, and actually, it's a penny for $4. And that puts things into perspective a little bit.
And Borden, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe that it's very laid out as to how it has to appear on the ballot. It has to say one quarter of a percent. And that one quarter, it confuses me too. So that's why we wanted people to understand that it's not a quarter. You know, it's much less than that on a $1 purchase, so.
Okay, well, that's good to say. Additionally, and backing up your comments in regards to Sampson and Duplin have already passed this.
Yep.
So some of our neighboring counties already have.
Yes, sir.
You know, one of the concerns that myself and I think a number of other Commissioners have, and that is, we rely too heavily on property owners to fund these services. This spreads it out a good bit more in regards to all of the citizens and also visitors coming in to Wayne County, spending their money here.
Absolutely.
Any comments or questions?
I got one touch on the, we've had 6.75 on that, we're already paying it on a lot of purchases.
Yeah, and so it has to do with how it's rounded. And Allison and I got very in-depth one day with spreadsheets. Often, you know, they can't divide up pennies, and so often, it's rounded up, and you're paying that, and that just goes to the state, I think Borden said. It just kind of disappears. And so, you know, oftentimes, you are already paying that because of the way the cash registers have to round up your purchase. And so, yeah, often, you are already paying it.
You're not getting a quarter of a penny. You're not getting a quarter of a penny back.
Exactly. Exactly.
They always round it, not damage.
They always do that.
Unfortunately.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, so first off, thank you for presenting this. Um, I just had a question pertaining to the 2.1 something million dollars.
Yeah.
Could it possibly be more than that, depending on?
I am not the numbers guy. So those numbers were crunched by, I believe, finance. Um, so they looked at, at how much revenue that we had in previous years from sales tax and what that would increase if I'm, if I'm not wrong.
But that's an estimate based on historical collections, and it's an estimate based on that particular article, um, that it's, that it's modeled after and would be modeled after if it were levied. So, um, if sales tax, you know, continues to increase, we could see more than that. So, um, it is, it's definitely subject to, to change. That is definitely an estimate.
Great, thank you.
So the more people buy.
Exactly, yep.
Okay, any other questions or comments?
I did want to let the board know as well. I'm going to be putting together some, uh, like a one sheet for you guys, as y'all are out in the community. Y'all have that this week, uh, in case citizens, residents have questions. Uh, that way you can help answer them a little bit more. So I'll have that to you guys this week as well.
And where can they find all that online?
Yeah, wangov.com/saltax. If you go to wangov.com, it's right there on the main page as well, uh, but it's slash sales tax.
Is it on the county's Facebook page as well?
It will be. That stuff's rolling out all this week, all that information.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Uh, I don't know whether you or Allison or Chip, what does traveling tourism generate in the county about, about?
I, I don't have, I don't have that number. We could probably reach out to, um, the tourism office, um, because they run a lot of those consolidated numbers for us.
It would be several million dollars.
Yes, I would think so. That, I think that's the latest I've heard.
But that, that gives you an idea of, you know, people that does not live in Wayne County are contributing also.
Have a question, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, this is for, um, our attorney Parker. Um, with this sheet that he would make available to us, is there a certain way that we can present this to the, um, citizens if they have questions about that?
You, you can explain what the tax is and what it's, what it can be used for. You can't spend county money to advocate people, uh, voting for it.
And if I could get you to expand upon that a bit, because my understanding is that as an individual commissioner, I can actually encourage people to vote for it, but the county as a whole cannot advocate for it.
That's correct. That's, that's.
So you may and I may actually, in talking with individuals, can encourage them to vote for it. However, the county as a whole cannot use, spend any resources to...
We can't persuade. We can only persuade.
You, you, so we can't go on an all-out campaign to actually, uh, ask people to vote for it?
No, and also, I should say, however, also, this presentation is now, uh, public record, so you can request a copy.
Okay, okay. Any other questions?
I would ask that you send that to us.
Absolutely.
Thanks, and good luck educating the public on why, why we need this.
Y'all are our, our biggest cheerleaders too. So, uh, you know, just, we want people to be informed. That's the bottom line. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Okay, now we're past the 5:30 timeframe, so the first public hearing that I want to open is a public hearing to receive public comments regarding a proposed economic development incentive grant to Suntree Snack Foods LLC, Project Berry. And I believe we're going to get a little bit of, uh, information on this from Mr. Neal.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, I'm standing in for our economic developer since I helped draft the agreement. I'll do the best I can. Uh, so a reminder, this is Suntree Snack, uh, Suntree Foods. They're going to be located at 210 Dixie Trail. Um, as a background, you all approved the sale of that building earlier this year following public hearing. Um, they are currently leasing that building from the county. Um, they, um, have an option to purchase that they must, um, exercise by the end of April of next year. So April 30th, 2023, they must purchase it. There are some incentives if, if they can get that closed by the end of the year. So that's the background of where we stand on that purchase and where they're going to be. The incentive agreement that's in front of you today is for a total of 166 jobs and a total capital investment of $10,220,000. Um, so that's been negotiated with our Economic Development Office. Um, as way of background, the governor did make an additional announcement earlier in September, um, for a $250,000 one-in-C grant, and those 166, uh, jobs will have an annual salary of, um, $50,742,000, which is above the average here in Wayne County. And those incentives are over a 10-year period, um, beginning this year. Um, as a reminder, all these incentives require that the company actually pay taxes on their capital improvements before we turn around and pay out any incentives. So, um, we don't refund taxes. However, it's an incentive based upon them meeting the jobs, meeting the capital investment, and also paying the taxes on their capital investments. If for some reason they don't meet the benchmark, benchmarks within a certain year, if it's only a percentage of the capital improvements or a percentage of the jobs, we prorate that and we pay out the incentive accordingly.
I think there is a correction that it's 94 jobs.
It's 94 jobs? I'm sorry. Okay. So we'll get that corrected then.
Okay.
So it's 94 jobs. Um, our total investment, our total incentive is $200,000 over 10 years. The city is also providing a $200,000, as you can see from this as well. So it's $200,000 from the county and $200,000 from the city.
Payable after they pay their property tax.
After they pay both county and city property taxes on all their capital improvements. And my understanding is they've already, they're already in there. They're running some lines and, and they're, they're rolling pretty good, so.
Well, with the $10 million investment, we will recoup our incentive pretty quickly.
Yes, sir, we will.
Okay, with that in mind, we, uh, the public hearing is open. Uh, anyone that wishes to speak?
No one signed up for this particular public hearing, sir.
No one signed up? Well, since no one signed up, uh, I hereby close the public hearing. Um, and the Board of Commissioners may take action on the proposed incentive.
I make a motion that we approve, uh, this item.
All right, we have a motion on the, uh, the floor to approve, uh, the Economic Development Incentive Grant. Uh, any discussion on the motion? Here are none. All those in favor signify by raising your right hand. With that in mind, uh, we now are going to recess the Board of Commissioners meeting, and I hereby convene the Board of Adjustment. As the Board of Adjustment, we have a public hearing, and the public hearing, uh, is to receive public comments regard, regarding a variance request.
Barry.
Our planning director's here to take this.
Do you swear your testimony will be true? So help you God.
Mr. Gray.
All right, good evening. Uh, this is a public hearing for the Board of Adjustment. We do have a variance request, excuse me, before you now, um, and I believe, uh, Ms. Carroll's passing out some information for you as well on this item. Uh, this is a request for variance of setbacks for property located at 4002 Indian Springs Road. Uh, this is what we call a double frontage lot. So basically, there's a road on one side and a road on the other, and it's sandwiched in between. So because of that, there's two, um, 60-foot setbacks. Our setbacks off of a road, a state road, are just 60 feet off the right-of-way. So that 60-foot setback applies to both of those roads. The applicant is requesting that, um, the board grant a 15-foot variance. Um, they basically want to build 45 feet from the roads and be given 15-foot of variance on both of those roads to give them more room to work with. Right now, there's a constraint with buildable area with a 60-foot setback. So the variance request would allow them a little more building room, uh, to put something there or to advertise. The planning board has reviewed this request and does recommend approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you have.
Any questions, or Mr. Gray?
Was there a, uh, was there a building on this at one point in time?
We do have an address there, so there may have been a building years ago, um, but if it was, it's been long removed. Okay, so you had no, no building there?
It doesn't look like it. Those trees are pretty.
Yeah, they've been there for a while.
It sounded like a path in there, is what I was asking.
Yeah, there's a kind of a path in there and, and there's an address point, but.
Mr. Chairman. Yes.
Uh, I would make a comment that I'm familiar with this property. So, in fact, I almost sound like I property wrote from it. But this, this is an unusual piece of property. It goes out to a triangle. I mean, these, they're basically, they're landlocked.
Especially with the 60-foot setback.
Right, right. And it's a rural area. I mean, you know, I mean, there's some development around it, but it's, it's not, not, not being entailed.
Okay, any other questions? Here are none. We are, uh, with this public hearing, and, uh, anyone sign up to speak?
Uh, yes, sir. We do have a James and Iris Hudson.
Okay. Would you all like to speak?
Do I have to go up there?
Oh, yes, please. We have to put you on camera. Do I have to?
Borden, we're doing it.
And, and we're going to.
Do you swear your testimony is true? So help you God.
Yes.
Yes, and, and the only thing, uh, we'd like to say is, uh, if you see that property in front of you, that little triangle, we live right on the other side of that little triangle. We've lived there for 32 years.
Ooh.
And that little triangle is, it, well, in, in our opinion, of course, you know, uh, I'm sure that, you know, they could squeeze a little house in there, but that would be jammed up to our property. And the roads, Sanderson Road and Indian Springs Road going right, there, there is, I mean, it would be crazy to live there. I mean, because it's busy with our house.
It's a highway.
Setting back with, uh, roads on either side. But that little corner is just a tiny little, little corner, maybe a half acre all total. So if you take the 60-foot off the center of the highway, you're talking a tiny space. Um, so we just want you to know that we're against it. But, you know, also that, you know, if you, if you set back from the 60-foot to the 45, you know, the rest of the county might want you to do that too. You know, so, uh, I'm just saying, our opinion, please, no.
Okay, all right.
We, uh, we, I retired, I built my house on the land next to it. And, uh, I always wanted a piece of land myself, but I said, Mr., I don't own all that land out there. He says, ain't nobody can build nothing there because it's not big enough really to put a decent home on. I said, that's fine. And he said, I got offered that I could buy. He said, well, I ain't going to sell it because it ain't worth nothing. So I said, okay. I said, I appreciate it, you know, and we've been living there, like I said, 32 years. I've been stuck with her for 50.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you for God's blessing.
You too.
Am I not be allowed to speak?
You did not sign up, so that would be, um, a decision. I'm sorry?
I came to step in for us.
Well, uh, that is not my decision.
Okay, with, um, with that in mind, is there any, well, that, no one else has signed up. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. So with that in mind, I'll close the, the public hearing. Um, and I will, um, yeah, yeah.
Do we have to act on this today, Mr. Chair?
We do not have to. Um, I, I would, I would like to say this. It's a, one of the things that, uh, you're not going to make everybody happy on this thing. I mean, however, the restriction in regards to this particular piece of property of the 60-foot setback, in my opinion, is a, uh, is, is causing the property not to be able to be used, the 60-foot. People are building homes on 10,000 square foot lots nowadays. Uh, it's hard to find property. Uh, I think it is up to the property owner as to whether or not they want to invest in building, uh, on this property and whether or not it's marketable or whatever. Um, but I would, I would entertain a motion for approval.
One quick.
Yes.
Where does your house sit at exactly on this map?
It's right in the corner. My house is right there.
Right behind.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any motions?
I'm reading the, um, I'm reading the, uh, the detail part.
The detail on?
On this, the, on the planned variance.
Oh, okay.
Can we have Barry come back up here for a second? Just have a question for you, sir.
Barry.
So we're dealing with a property such as that. If, if, are there guidelines on what size property you could put on a small space like that?
Well, the minimum lot size for a road front lot would be 20,000 square feet. So it would meet the minimum requirement. So there, there's not an issue in terms of the lot size. A lot size is actually fine. Um, it's just a matter of with those two setbacks, it squeezes in whatever buildable area they would have. Uh, whereas typical properties will only have one front setback. This one happens to have two, so.
I see.
Materially, neighbors are losing. It's not material at that, or harm. See that where?
Barry, will it be residential, like a house? It won't be like a business or anything like that?
Right, that's what the applicant, the property owner is proposing.
So the, the planning board had no issues?
Right, they had no issues.
And did they not recommend that we approve the variance?
They recommended, yes.
Uh, only problem I have with it is that it is two sides. It was just one and you asking for it, that would be something different, which very few houses have two roads like this anyway. But it's just the fact that it's both sides. So, you know, just asking a lot, you know, in my opinion. Um, now you look right across the street. It's a wooded area also, but, I don't know. I'm just, I always like to lean towards the, the surrounding neighbors and what they say, because I don't have to live there.
Right, and the, uh, and, and just for informational purposes, um, you know, the property to the east, um, the neighboring property, when it was developed, um, 30 or so years ago, was actually allowed a setback off of Sanderson Road of 25 feet versus 60. Um, and so in a sense, they were, that lot was granted a 35-foot, um, uh, variance, so to speak, at that point. So with the two 15 feet on this property, it would be 30. Um, they're just taking it off of both. But, um, but this property itself, since it was not part of that subdivision to the east, um, was not granted any sort of variance when that process took place, placed 30 years ago.
It was a dirt road at that time.
Right.
So you're saying that the, that the process.
So it wasn't stayed on? So you, you said these roads, they said to be stayed on, right?
They are.
But it's, but at the time, it was a dirt road. It wasn't stayed on?
It was stayed on.
It was stayed on.
It was still stayed on then?
It was just a stayed-on dirt road. It just wasn't paved, right?
Would that fall in the same, would that fall in the same guidelines though?
It would, yes, sir.
Is some of the property on the driveway there coming in? It looks like that corner there.
Actually, that yellow line is a little bit on our property.
Yeah, it's hard to say because some- Yeah, it's hard to say because sometimes the aerial photos and the property lines don't match up sometimes. So it, it's hard to say for sure, but.
So go back to what you just said, the, the subdivision, this, where is that at? Down Sanderson or down Indian Springs?
Oh, it's the property directly next door.
What now?
The property directly next door.
So it was?
That property was created along with the lots beside of it 30 years ago.
And at that time?
Created at least 30.
And at that time, they had a what?
They had a 25-foot setback off of Sanderson Road.
25 feet?
Right.
And now it's what?
60.
And because it was a dirt road, it was 25 feet.
It was still a state-maintained road, though, correct?
Right.
So was it just 25 feet off of Sanderson?
It was granted a variance.
Right, it was granted a variance. I mean, as part of the subdivision process, a variance was issued at that point 30 years ago for that property.
But was it just variance over Sanderson or variance off of?
Just Sanderson.
Just Sanderson? Okay. I'm just, is that, is that a building right there?
Yeah, there is an accessory building within that, would have been a 60-foot setback.
It's probably a mobile home right there. So therefore, they're closer to that than what that is. So based on this, Barry, this, you got that same piece of paper we got? That right there?
Yes.
That's in that same variance for? Is that what I'm seeing? 25 feet?
Oh, yeah. No, the, the property just to the left of that.
But that, that, that piece?
The, yeah, and the other property, very well made, but the, I know the property to the east does.
But what I'm asking is that, that, that trailer's close to, oh, that, I say it's a trailer.
Yeah, it's within the 60-foot, that's right. Yeah, that trailer, that single-wide mobile home, yeah, it is closer than 60.
It's closer than 60?
Yes.
And it appears those on the other side of Sanderson are all the same thing, that they're with.
Yeah, they're going to be kind of close there, yeah, if not over.
Kind of close.
One thing to consider is that, this might be input. Even without a setback, there still could be a construction of a home there. There's still enough room to build a 1200 square foot home. 12, 1500 square foot.
Well, I agree. I mean, you could, you could build a home on that even of the 60-foot setback. I mean, it, maybe it's tighter, but it can be done.
Is the point, is the point of that involved, too? Is that part of the property or not?
It is. They own, the applicant owns both of those properties.
Well, it's two different properties?
There's two different properties, but they're going to combine them together and just sell it as one piece.
Okay.
Is there a reason why the applicant didn't show up today?
He's here.
I haven't seen him.
Oh, my God. Why didn't you sign up?
I didn't realize it was a sign up. I was excepting waiver though.
Mr. Chairman, is it okay if we make an exception? Because this is kind of complicated here. We want to make the right choice.
I ask, ask, ask Mr. Parker a question.
Yes, you can let anybody talk anytime you want to.
Okay. Mr. Lynch, come on up. Let's get to the bottom of this.
If you'll come up here.
It'd be my pleasure.
Left hand on the bottom, raise your right hand.
Left hand on top.
You've already closed the public hearing.
Oh, my gosh, did I really?
It was.
I've already closed the public hearing, though they reminded me of.
Okay.
Can I reopen the public hearing?
No.
No. Oh, I'm sorry.
I was that.
You can still speak. We're still going to allow you to speak, just for informational purposes. Is that okay?
I've got these handouts, too, that might provide color, if you guys are interested.
Please.
And for the public. You can see our neighbors are, we cooperate pretty well.
Sure.
And I'd like for our neighbors to have a copy of them, too, so I'll provide them, so they can look the same thing we're looking at.
Can't do what?
Can't submit evidence.
We cannot, okay, I'm sorry, we cannot submit evidence. So pass those back out. I'm going to get in trouble here. So it, it might be best that we just go ahead and either defer action or take action. Am I correct? Give me some guidance here.
Anything he says cannot be used.
Well, then, if that's the case, you better not say it.
Thank you anyway.
Okay, thank you. All right. What is the pleasure of the board?
My only question is, the other ones are closer to the road. That's, so we're asking for a variance on Indian Springs and Sanderson?
Yes.
But you look back at the next piece of, next handout, these properties are closer than 45 feet. Looks like to me. I may be wrong. Is Barry, can Barry tell us that, or? No?
There evidently was a, there was a 25-foot setback, then it went to 45, and now it's 60. Is that correct?
It was a 60-foot setback, and then variance was granted for the property to the east for 25 feet.
For what?
25.
25.
But the applicant today is requesting 45.
Okay, so it was a 60, they asked when they did the subdivision for variance to 25. However, in this case, they're asking for a variance, not a 25, but a 45. Okay. Please, let's move on, please.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the variance based on the planning board's direction of approving.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for approval based upon the planning board's recommendation that it be approved.
Mr. Chairman, I need to ask Mr. Parker a question. The property across the road from that, on Sanderson Road, my father-in-law and wife was involved in that property. Do I need to refuse myself from voting?
No, sir.
No.
No, sir.
Okay. No, I'm sorry, we're in the process of voting. We, we've got a motion on the floor. Any discussion, more discussion on the motion. Here and none, all those in favor of the motion of approval of, of the variance, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? Okay, thank you very much. All right, now I'm going to adjourn the Board of Adjustment meeting and reconvene the Board of Commissioners meeting.
You're at, you might, you might sign up for public comment.
I do have one sign up in that person. Julie Whitfield.
Okay, I am opening the floor for public comments, and I understand that Julie Whitfield has signed up. Would you like to come up and speak? Under public comments. You've got a limit of four minutes. Yeah, don't go over four minutes now, I'm going to rule you out of order.
So, okay, my name is Julie Whitfield, and I'm coming here tonight to speak just briefly about a man that was very dear to my heart. And he held a position that all of you all hold. And he also was chairman of the board. So my daddy, Deloitte Cotton, served on the board for eight years. And I'm sure he made some people mad. And I'm sure he made some people happy. I was very young during that time, but I did get my mom to help me with a few things to remember. And she did give me some things, like, for example, there was an occasion that when he was chairman of the board, that there was a track of land that, of corn was planted on it. And the corn crop had a few weeks short of being harvested, and my daddy worked with that farmer to allow that harvest. And the corn, they saved the corn. And that's just how my daddy was. He was always there to help people, to be their form. He was a very caring person. He represented the people of Wayne County. He worked for the farmers of everybody, but he specifically focused on the farmers. He was an honest man. He listened to the citizens of Wayne County, and he never allowed anyone to be forgotten. Those of you, again, that did know him, Mr. Gordon, know him very well, and I was going to speak at that a little bit later, but he loved Mr. Gordon Parker. That was his, his go-to. Anytime anything come up, he would say, you know, let's call Gordon, you know, let's talk to Gordon. So, but anyway, he was just a very caring person, and the reason I decided to come tonight was, one, because I wanted to be here for the recognition of the officers. And also, I wanted to just be here because this is the month of his birthday. So on the 12th, he would have been 92 years old. And I know he would be very proud, and I'm not going to get into the position of, you know, the, the election, but I am running for office, and I know he would be very proud of me. And this is something that he would want me to do. He would want me to go and to let the board know that that is something that I am doing. And I can only hope and pray that I can feel even close to the footsteps that daddy filled. Again, those of you, you know, a lot of different age with the board now, but those of you that know Mr. Sherman, best, Mr. Sherman came back to me at daddy's funeral. Daddy died in 2007 at 76 years old. And he came, and when he came through the line, he said, my daddy called me baby Julie. He said, baby Julie, he said, he loved you so much. And he said, and I loved him, and he loved me. But there's one thing that we agreed to do, and we agreed to disagree. And I know that just like then, when that was, you know, that was up on the table, you know, we have to agree to disagree sometimes. But you don't have to still not like one another. And I see that through you all. You know, I'm seeing that through what I'm going through now, that you all agree to disagree sometimes, but you still love each, love each other like Christ loves us. And that, to me, learning and being green at what I'm doing means a lot. And I really wanted to just come in and tell you I appreciate it. And I just thought the month of October, being that it was daddy's birthday, would be a good time to do that. So please don't take this as if I am politicking, because I'm not, and I have just turned red. But I'm bored, but I am here just to, I wanted to recognize my daddy. I've never done anything like this before. And I just wanted y'all to know that he really appreciated, he really loved his job. He appreciated people of Wayne County. And he would appreciate what you all are doing now. And thank you so much for letting me come in. Thank you.
Thank you, staying within your time.
Thank you so much.
Okay, no one else has signed up, so I'm closing the public comment period. County managers report.
Yes, sir. I announced, we attended, or I attended a, the agricultural luncheon at the Maxwell Center today. That was very nice. It was well-attended. It was a very good program. I always enjoy that every year. I'd also like to remind you, as employees, you all are eligible for your flu vaccines in our wellness center. That starts tomorrow. So urge y'all, if you want to get your flu vaccine as a staff person, please do.
Actually, they were open today, but I didn't want to get a root canal and a flu shot.
We also survived the storm pretty good. We had some, you know, minor damage, but we were really blessed there. Like to remind you of our quarterly municipalities meeting that's going to take place at the Maxwell Center November the 1st. That'll be from 12 to 1 after our regular meeting. Also, the Gozber Business Campus groundbreaking is October the 10th at 11:00 a.m. on site at 400 Paytown Road. And that's all the comments I've got, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Foster?
No comment.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes, sir, thank you. I had the opportunity to attend a conference in our Capitol, and I had the opportunity to be educated from many of our country's leaders, both political, political, as well as business professionals and organizations that fight against violent crime. This conference, in my opinion, has allowed me to bring back tools that may be an asset to our Board of Commissioners, possibly add to our tax, our tax base, and help with what seems to plague our many communities in regard to violent crimes. The senseless murders of young people. I believe these tools may help to reduce the violence in our community. Most don't understand the ramifications of murder. It's more cost-effective to create programs opposed to someone being murdered. Some of, some, someone murdered can affect our community costing upward into millions of dollars. Developers may decide not to proceed with projects that could have resulted in millions in development and job creation, opposed to any anti-balance programs costing maybe 20 or $30,000. A county our size should not be dealing with the loss of one of our most valuable commodities, our youth. The balance is having a profound effect on our young black men and women, as well as families and friends. Future growth could be halted if we don't figure something out. Last week, I received a phone call of a mother who lost her only child, Mr. Alex Sharpless. His body was found by Wayne County Sheriff's deputies. She would like her, his, his murder solved. She wanted me to let Wayne County know that her son is and was important, and she would like for his killers to be brought to justice. We have to, as a community, stop thinking it's okay to see our young black men and women short-lived lives. If you've heard anything that would give his mother closure, please contact our sheriff deputies and detectives. It's time to reevaluate the term snitching. What is snitching? 14-year-old kids being shot and killed, that's a discussion that needs to take place. What is snitching? In closing, the conference I attended, in my opinion, was allowed to help me bring back some tools that can help our Board of Commissioners, possibly add to the tax base, and help us figure out how to help our young people stop harming one another. And I look forward later to speaking with my colleagues in regard to these resources. Breast cancer awareness, awareness as well. This month is extremely important to me. I lost my sister, Tiny Janay Heath. My big little sister, you are missed. Thank you.
Commissioner Barbara Akon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today, we all had the privilege of attending the Farm Appreciation Event. It was good to see the farming community come together and start speaking about the importance of our farm lives that is being removed from us gradually. We're losing a lot of farmland. I have spoken on this several, several times. But it's good to see them start speaking about this. Instead of sitting at the table, they were at the roundtable today giving good advice. As a farmer's wife, I've lived a farm life. I know what it's about. I understood everything that they said today, because it all brought memories back of my life living on the farm. They also mentioned about the Century 100 Farms. We are Century 100 Farm, which we hang proudly in our front yard. And like I said, it was just good to see the young people get involved in farming and speak up, too, because we need to start speaking up about our farmland and saving our farmland. And also, Ms. Commissioner Williams, thank you for bringing that information back. It is very informative to hear this. Like you, I, I have read in the paper and different things about the loss of young people's lives, and that is very concerning to me as well, because we've got to do something to get the people on board with this and everything, and thank you for that.
Yes, ma'am, no problem.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Gerg?
I'm going to echo what Ms. Barbara and County Manager said. The, the ag luncheon was a success. I saw, very proud of Lee West from West Family Farms. He's the, one of the younger of the farm, of that farming family. He was a little nervous yesterday, I think, but he didn't show it today. And so I'm very proud of Lee. He's a good family friend. The, prior to the storm coming in, Kendall and myself contacted the Aaron Stryker about the possibility of storm shelters. Thank the good Lord we didn't need it, but we, we went out and staged a, one of our storm trailers at Meadow Lane, kind of a dry run, if you will, to, to set it up. We met with the principal yesterday. I called Aaron back. Since it was drizzling rain, I couldn't do a whole lot. I called Kendall. He, we went, we called Aaron, contacted the school system, and we went to the other areas that we would have a storm shelter set up. And we spoke with the, with the principals, got their contact information. So in case we do have to deploy the trailers, we know exactly where they'll be. They won't be, you know, we've, we've got it kind of staged up ahead of time. So the lack of communication won't play into, play into the roles from now on. I think that's, that's about it.
Commissioner Wayne Akon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did, we came before last.
I did, we came before last, I attended the Friends of Seymour trip up to the Air Force Base. We had a good, good conversation on Friday night with some of the generals and the colonels that's involved with, not only the squadron at Seymour Johnson, but other bases that the fighter planes are assigned to. Had a briefing on Saturday morning from one of the intelligence officers. He is not Air Force, but he is intelligence for the, for the Air Force. And a very, very good briefing. As he, as he told us, and it's, it's really no secret, they are very concerned about what's going on in the Ukraine. They are very concerned. The leader of Russia. They really don't know how to play him. They didn't, didn't come right out and say it, but they basically compared him to some of the things that went on during World War II. But they are, they are very concerned. They're not scared, but they're very concerned. And discussion was, talked about, you know, as far as when is our F-15E's gonna be replaced? They basically do not know. The Air Force is in the process of acquiring new planes. At this point, Air Force knows what they want, but unfortunately, it's into the, into politicians' hands on what they get. And it shouldn't be that way, but that's the way it is. But it, but there is discussion on replacing some of the aircraft in the, in the Air Force as far as the fighters. One thing that is a plus for us here at Seymour Johnson is the assignment of the new tankers. That is, that is, that's gonna be a plus. But it was a very informative meeting. We had several generals in the meeting Saturday night. When you sit with them with them on Saturday night, out of uniform, they can talk fairly freely. They will not talk politics if they can afford to. Like I said, they are concerned on some of the things that's going on in, in this world, especially in Europe. Also, I attended, for trustees being at the college, and we have a new trustee at the college. Commissioner, I mean, trustee Chris West. Not Chris West, Craig West from West Family Farms is also one of the board of trustees at, at the college now. I think he'll be a great asset to the, to the farm program at the college. I see, also attended the Chamber of Commerce meeting. Chip was also there. And basically, that's about it, Mr. Chairman.
I understand, Commissioner Gurr, I got-
Yeah, I got two more things. First is the Wayne County Fire Department Association are still asking for volunteers for your respective communities. Go by a fire department on a Monday or Tuesday night, you'll probably see somebody there just pull in. We have got some signs up. When the fair goes, when the fair's finished, we'll get the signs back out about what times you can go by those respective fire departments. But do, do think about volunteering. You'll, it'll be a great reward. That's the most gratifying thing I think I've ever done. The last thing is, and I almost forgot, I wanted to wish my, my little, I'll say my baby, she's 15-years-old today. Madison's, today's her birthday, so I gotta be quiet so I can go take her out of here, so, thank you.
Amazing. My granddaughter's birthday's today. Happy birthday, Haley. I, I wanna wrap up this meeting by stating and encouraging- That's Commissioner Weems? Oh, Commissioner Weems?
Yes, sir.
And encouraging folks here in Wayne County to go and vote for the quarter cent sales tax. I know, nobody likes taxes. Nobody likes to increase taxes. But government cannot provide services without revenue. And as every one of our individual incomes or, or expenses have skyrocketed, same thing goes for Wayne County governments. And we have got to have additional revenue, or you're gonna be faced with property taxes. Now, somebody asked me the other day and says, well, Joe, are y'all gonna promise to lower property taxes? Well, we can't do that, but I can say this. I will vote for a property decrease if the quarter cent sales tax passes. I'll go so far as to say I'm gonna make the motion to reduce the property taxes. It's a fair way of spreading the taxes across a larger group of individuals. So, I just am encouraging you. We're talking about a penny on $4. Think about that for a minute. A penny on $4. We all can afford that. It's a much fairer tax. So, I'm encouraging you to hold your nose and vote yes for the quarter cent sales tax. Anything else to come before our board?
Nothing further, sir.
Say what?
Nothing further.
Nothing further. We adjourn. Thank you.